It is 5:30. Almost missed it. Uh, we will go ahead and start and we will start with the roll call.
Mr. Munoz.
President.
Dr. Bonebrake. Mrs. Schmidt. Dr. Schumacher. Dr. Beeson. And Mr. Tatum notified that he will hopefully be here by open session.
Thank you. Um, and so we will move to our next item which is the executive session. So I'm looking for a motion from Dr. Beeson.
I move the Board of Education recess into executive session for 60 minutes for consultation with the board's attorney on matters protected by the attorney client privilege to protect the privilege and the board's position in potential litigation and administrative procedures. The board will return to open session in the boardroom at 6:31 PM. The superintendent, board attorney, and leadership staff are invited into executive session.
Is there a second for that motion? Dr. Bonebrake? Any discussion? If not, we'll vote.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Bonebrake. All votes are in and the motion carries.
Thank you. Mm.
Hey, it is 6:31, so we will start back and move into the Pledge of Allegiance.
No.
Too scared.
Okay, we're in a big family affair.
Oh.
Start just from the start. They're kind of back here.
That's Carol.
Oh goodness.
I'm feeling nervous.
And look, they're looking, they're still looking at you on the camera.
Yeah, they're still on the camera.
She's waving. Okay, wait a minute. All right, you guys ready?
We got one down.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That was the best pledge I have heard all school year.
Very good. We will move into our next item, which is the adoption of the agenda, and so I need a motion from Dr. Beeson.
I move the board adopt the agenda as presented.
Is there a second? Dr. Bonebrake, thank you. Any discussion on the agenda? Okay, if not, we'll go for vote.
All votes are in and the motion carries.
Thank you. And I'll go back to Dr. Anderson for school highlights.
Yeah, thank you. I'm actually going to call Dr. Gray up because he's such a behind the scenes person with helping with all of this. We have a very special guest here this evening as well. He'll acknowledge all the people that helped us get supplies and he'll turn it over to something new that happened this year that gave us even more supplies. Dr. Gray.
Thank you so much, Dr. Anderson, and good evening Board of Education. Today, we're very excited because we have three people who really helped us this year in our supply drive. We had three individuals, two of the individuals are unable to be here tonight, but they have done a great job in helping us to supply school supplies to all of our families across the Pika Public Schools. Tonight, we have Kansas Secure Title here. The three people that helped us this year, Dylan's, they've been a partner with us, the Step the Bus event, and it has gone on now for about four years. So again, we're very thankful for Dylan's, also United for a successful school year. That was the event that many of you participated in at Ross. We had almost 500 families that participated in it this year. So again, Kansas Secure Title is another one of our partners that has really helped us, I think it's been for the last three years or so, maybe even longer.
Six.
Six years, wow. Time flies when you're having fun, yeah. But we were so impressed with this partner. Each year, we take a bus over to Kansas Secure Title, and sometimes we take the little small bus, but this year, we didn't have the small bus, we took the large bus. And when they showed up here at Burnett, we went out and we took two people to get the supplies off the bus, only to realize that every seat on the bus had supplies. And so the whole central office staff, yes, the whole central office staff, I mean, the whole HR and Burnett, they came out and all of us, we had, we spent probably about a good 15 minutes, 15, 20 minutes getting all the supplies because of Kansas Secure Title. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Lindsay, and she'll share a little bit about what they did. Lindsay.
I just want to first thank you for USD 501, for letting us join you in this fight to make sure that every student has school supplies that need it. It makes for a successful year. This year, we did things a little differently. We wanted to make sure that Realtors in the city of Topeka wanted to help, and so I decided to make it a game. And so I decided to give the winner a barbecue lunch to whoever brokerage came up with the most supplies. And they came out, let me tell you what. Coldwell Banker, American Home, Better Homes and Gardens, Wastel Realty, Berkshire Hathaway, and Top City Realty brought us 1,600 school supplies, backpacks, and down to pencils. So they love a good fight, and they definitely, definitely came through. So that's something that we did just to have a little fun and bring some, some supplies in people in need.
And I know the board will have some questions for you, but we'd like to, Ms. Lindsay, give you this certificate, the Pika Public Schools recognizes Kansas Secure Title.
Thank you.
Marcy Lindsay, you have really led the way in making sure that every student this year is served. Thank you so much.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you again. And maybe often have a question or two, someone to turn it over to the president.
Are there questions, comments from the board? Ms. Bulley.
You know, we have found also when we have parent events, food helps the people who show up. So what a great idea you had. And I can just, I know that you are probably picturing that student that was walking in with her backpack full of supplies with a smile on their face because they didn't walk in empty handed.
Yes.
And it's because of you and everything that you've done and all the people around you that have filled that bus. And so we don't know even how to thank you because those, those students may not know it was you, but that smile, I hope is a thanks for you. Thank you so much for all your effort on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions? Yes, Mr. Munoz.
You know, Ms. Schmidt and I, we are representative part of it, we're from Eastopique, right? And so a lot of the families there could, will certainly benefit from that, and the parents too, right? Whenever, the times right now are pretty tough for lots of families, but especially those in parts of our city and in our schools that things get tough, sometimes students lose out. And so I think this is appreciated, not just from, from the student perspective, but also parents to help them and make, make sure they have it, and teachers, right? Because we know that too often, teachers will pull out of their own pockets and make sure that their students are covered, and so it makes a great difference for a lot of individuals, and so thank you again. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I would just echo Mr. Munoz and Ms. Bulley's comments, and we appreciate it so much. I would just echo Mr. Munoz and Ms. Bulley's comments, and we appreciate it so much.
Thank you so much, and I look forward to next year, maybe we'll have it stacked a little bit higher.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much for having me, we appreciate you, thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, and then the, uh, last item, it was just a video, uh, for United for a Successful School Year. Uh, they are not here this evening, but it is led by the Noon Mountain Zion team, but represents multiple organizations, many churches, many other organizations. Dr. Gray, any other comments you want to mention about United for a Successful School Year? He does so much in the background, in fact, he had other events going on that day, but he still showed up early that morning. And we know Dr. Schumacher was there giving physicals and Ms. Bulley and Mr. Tatum were there, and hundreds of students were served. Any other comment you'd like to make, sir?
And I think you said it well, Dr. Anderson. Again, thank you, Dr. Schumacher, and, uh, the many people that helped make that a successful, uh, event. Uh, for years, we've had it at Holland Park and then we moved it to Ross. And, uh, again, kudos to Dr. Gardner, who works very hard to engage the community. Again, uh, to United Successful School Year, I know they're unable to be here tonight, uh, but all of their efforts are greatly appreciated.
Today at Ross Elementary, we're having a back to school supply giveaway where we have a lot of churches and community organizations who have come to volunteer their time and purchase school supplies for a lot of students across Topeka.
This event is United for a Successful School Year. I used to be a housing inspector for Topeka Housing Authority. And I can hear parents when I was doing their inspections saying how much it costs to buy supplies when they have more than one child. So I decided to start doing a back to school fair so that when they start that first day, they have what they need.
Today, we are giving out as much as we could fill up. Each year, it feels amazing to be able to show up and do this for so many families. Being able to see the kids' faces light up, getting to pick their backpack and see that they're ready to go for the school year and they can be excited about that start to their classes.
Well, I think there's no better place than to have a back to school supply event in an actual school because the school is the heart of the community and having it at Ross is honored to have it here. And just that excitement, I don't think there's a better way to start a couple of weeks before school starts by seeing your students picking out the school supplies. Thank you to everyone who volunteered, everyone who provided school supplies, and to all the churches who poured their time into making this a great event.
Thank you.
Thank you, United for a Successful School Year.
You can see all the different churches and actually, and I, I was going to say it goes on and on because that was fellowship talking and, and, uh, many of the organizations. And for those that are watching, we just appreciate the tremendous support. And with that, uh, that, with that video concluding, those are all of our highlights, I'm going to turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. So we'll move on, uh, to public communications and we do have public communication tonight. So, um, Ms. Burton, I would ask you to come forward and I'm going to read you if it's okay as you're coming forward, just the blurb that I have to read, um, that you've heard before. But, uh, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes to address the board. We ask that your remarks to the board be respectful. If you should have a complaint against a specific employee, employee, we ask that you submit your written complaint to the superintendent. If the complaint is against the superintendent, please address your written complaint to either me as board president or the clerk of the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Schumacher, good evening. Thank you all of you for your service on the school board and allowing me some time to speak. My name is Laura Burton, I'm here as a resident of the Calatille neighborhood and also as a proud USD five oh one parent of two Randolph Raiders, Reed, who is here with me, and Amelia, who's also here with me. They've joined me this evening to learn more about how their school district is managed and they're very excited to be here. Some of you may recall, I spoke to you in December, right? And this is about the same issue, encouraging you to take action on ownership of Boswell Park. This is a discussion that's now entering year three, going on between USD five oh one and Shawnee County Parks and Recreation. As you know, the park is currently owned by USD five oh one. Shawnee County or the city of Topeka have been responsible for maintenance since at least the nineteen nineties. And after I spoke at your December meeting, I'm happy that we did see some progress on this area, a little bit, a solution that it seemed like for a while was going to work, that Shawnee County and USD five oh one officials were both positive about. There was discussion right after that meeting and a few weeks after that about trading Boswell Park for the, um, the track and field area at Central Park, which I think is a great solution that makes a lot of sense. It gets land used by USD five oh one into your hands and a park that's been managed by Shawnee County Parks and Rec into their hands, a fair trade for both organizations that I think allows for more efficient use of taxpayer funds. But for the last six months, nothing has happened. I've just been told by the county that everybody is awaiting action from USD five oh one. In the meantime, your park, because it does belong to you, is not being improved or maintained at the level of the surrounding parks. Significant improvement in the park is overdue. And I'm being told by Shawnee County Parks and Rec that that cannot be completed or scheduled until this ownership issue is resolved. So the Calatille neighborhood and Topeka Public Schools families that live there have been told to wait for resolution. And again, this discussion's been going on for the last three years. We've been patient, but three years is a very long time to wait for significant park maintenance that's overdue. I'm hoping I can encourage some of you on the board to put this on your agenda, to move this faster and to keep it in the public eye. As much as I enjoy coming and I'll continue to do so, I'd love to see us resolve this ownership issue. I'd like to see Reed and Amelia see that their school board acts on this with the urgency that the situation requires, and I trust your good judgment to resolve the issue fairly and promptly. Reed, is there anything you would like to add?
No.
No, thank you. Excellent. Big Bear, is there anything you would like to add?
No.
Big Bear and Reed are both good as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Um, we will move on to our next business, which is, uh, disposition of business by consent. And so I need a motion for that. And Dr. Beeson.
I move the board approve the items of business by consent as presented and authorize the board president or superintendent to sign the special project and purchasing contracts for and on behalf of the board.
Is there a second for that? Mr. Tatum, thank you. Any discussion on the items of business by consent? Dr. Bonebreak.
I just had a question about what AMR charges.
Mm-hmm.
There's nothing said, it's hourly or?
That's their hourly rate, I believe.
Now, do they stand there during the games? I've?
They do, they're, they're usually on the southeast side by the entrance.
Yeah, so there's potentially nineteen games.
Mm-hmm.
And two and a half hours or three hours?
Yeah, or more.
So what do they charge?
It's in the memorandum, says one twenty-five per hour for between thirteen to seventeen possible games. If you want to.
I must have missed it.
Other, other questions on that, Dr. Bonebreak, or is that satisfy your? Thank you, Mr. Munoz. Save Mr. Dick the, from coming the rest of the way. Other, uh, questions, um, on the consent agenda? If not, I think we're ready for a vote.
All votes are in and the motion carries unanimous.
Thank you. I think up next is actually our discussion item before the superintendent's report. Um, um, and so I don't know if it's Mr. Bucy or Mr. Minky as far as the, um, publishing the notice of hearing.
Mr. Bucy's making his way up.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Bucy.
And he'll be asking you to grant permission to publish the budget notice of hearing and exceeding the revenue neutral to Mr. Bucy.
Yes, thank you very much. Um, give Mr. Reiner a second to pull up these slides. So, uh, yes, uh, the reason I'm here is to ask for your permission to publish our budget notice of hearing and our R and R, um, notice of hearing. So, you go to the first slide if you would. Just as a reminder, um, we're authorized to levy taxes in eighteen different funds. We as USD five oh one only levy in five different funds. Um, our general and supplemental general funds, which fund operations. Um, I will, uh, just mention again that the general fund, remember, we, we are required to levy the twenty mils for schools, uh, but that goes to the state and then the state distributes that based on, um, number of students. Uh, we also levy in capital outlay, um, for buildings and equipment, um, things of that nature. Bond and interest fund to pay our bond principal and interest and the special liability fund for legal defense for the school district. So, and I apologize, I know that's really small, but I, I really just wanted to draw your attention on this slide to just a couple of things. This is a slide you've already seen before with just some updated information. Um, our revenue neutral rate as provided by the county was forty-two point one nine four. Um, what we're proposing tonight as, as a total mill levy is forty-six point two four one. Um, and, and if you look at the, uh, the change in, or the, the difference between our, uh, FY twenty-six is current year proposed budget versus last year, the significant, um, increase is relative to, to the small increase that we're proposing are, uh, one, in capital outlay. Um, and again, our, our buildings and equipment are not getting any newer. Um, we have millions and millions of dollars in deferred maintenance as well. Um, and, and we're also needing to, to, uh, increase the bond and interest mill levy. So as a reminder, um, last year, the state was funding sixty-five percent of our principal and interest payments and that decreased to sixty-one percent. Um, the, the, uh, funding formula, the, the, uh, factors for the other funds decreased a little bit as well. So as you can imagine, with, with home prices and, and appraised valuation still increasing, um, and us losing state aid at the same time, it, it's kind of a double edged sword. Um, it, it just makes it a little difficult. Excellent. So here's the, the comparison to where we sit relative to the other schools in the county, uh, with that being three forty-five Seaman, uh, three seven two Silver Lake, four thirty-seven Auburn Washburn, and then Shawnee Heights. I don't, I don't know what, uh, final rates they're bringing forward, but as you can see, we're, we're well below any of the other districts where they were at even last year, um, which, which I think is a good place. Um, and, and we feel that it's fair. So, um, just to give you an idea, that proposed rate, um, on a, on a hundred and eighty thousand dollar property, so appraised value of a hundred and eighty thousand, the same property that I laid out in the memorandum to you all. Um, with our increase, that would be, that would be an eighty-three dollar annual increase. And of that fifty-five percent would be attributable to just increase in property values alone, just, just general increase in property value and the other forty-five percent would be applicable to what we're proposing here with the increase in mill levy, so eighty-three dollars annual on a hundred and eighty thousand dollar property. So, uh, as a reminder, when we, when we sent our, um, intent to exceed revenue neutral over to the county clerk, we have to set a max mill levy, we cannot go over that. We also lock in our hearing date and time. The rate that we sent over was a little over forty-seven mils. And as you can see, we, we're, we're coming back here to you tonight with, with a little over forty-six. Um, and we've decreased that almost, almost two percent. So I think it, it's been challenging, but I, but I think it's, I still think it's a fair budget, so. Um, which brings me to this, and you've heard me say this before as well, it's very difficult, um, to balance, you know, being, being good stewards and fiduciaries for taxpayer dollars with, um, adequately funding our schools. And, and there is a difference between funding and adequately funding. Um, you know, we, we mentioned the capital outlay dollars, you know, these, the, this deferred maintenance can only go on for so long, just patching things before we have real problems. Um, so, so we, we really do feel that, that we put together, um, a, a fair budget for you to review. So again, I'm here tonight to ask for your permission to publish, um, what, what we're planning to publish is that Code ninety-nine, the one page budget notice of hearing form, as well as the exceeding revenue neutral rate form. Uh, we'll, we'll plan to publish that in the Topeka Metro News with your permission, starting this upcoming Monday. Um, and then we'll also post that on our district website as required. So August twenty-fifth will be the first day that it would run in the paper. It has to be out there ten days before our, our, uh, scheduled R and R and budget hearing, which is that tenth day would be September third. And September fourth, uh, we come back and we'll have, uh, we'll start with our R and R hearing. Um, and you'll have the roll call vote. We'll then move into the budget hearing where you won't actually vote on the budget, that will be voted on in our regular meeting. And with that, I'm happy to stand for any question.
Questions for, yes, Dr. Bonebreak.
So if we approve this, does this mean no more nights and weekends?
No.
Other questions for Mr., yes, Mr. Munoz?
Uh, Mr. Bucy, would you help me understand, um, for the last four, five, six years, we've been lowering the, the mill levy? Help me understand, uh, the reasoning behind why we think we might need to sort of raise that ever so slightly.
So, so lowering the mill levy, a- as our home values are, are increasing, um, that revenue neutral rate is going to be lower than your total mill rate from the last year just because, you know, it's a higher property valuation. Um, and, and I believe, you know, the finance team, this is just my first year in, they've, they've done a good job to really stay close to revenue neutral. Um, ever since that statute was, uh, came out, you know, we, we went through as a district, the, the revenue neutral proceedings. Uh, the state recommends doing that as well, um, just for, for safeguarding. But yeah, it, it's really been to, to really be as fair to the taxpayers as we can. Um, but, but just looking at the dollars, the reduced state funding, um, to, to, to be where we need to be with dollars, um, to adequately fund our school, we, we feel really comfortable with, with, with raising it.
Does that answer, Mr. Munoz?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure we'll get more into the budget here in, in the coming weeks, right? Yeah, okay.
Thank you, Ms. Bulley.
Since this is the first time we've raised it for a while, and I know we don't have a lot of selections, but I don't know how many people read the Metro. And so that's a concern to me that, uh, it, it doesn't notify very many people really that I know of, right?
Well, and, and we, we're required to publish it on our website. Um, we'll also have a book available here. Um, we have one up at the clerk's desk, we'll have a, a full budget book that anyone can come in and look at. Um, I've, I've spoken with a couple of taxpayers, Mr. Minky's spoken with some.
Every single homeowner got one of those?
Yeah.
Yes, I did.
We make it very aware.
Yeah.
Uh, we, we really do.
Yeah, I mean, but I, but I think.
That, that's my question, that if we're raising it, as many people as possible should understand that it's being raised so it doesn't feel like we're hiding behind doors and not letting them know, so.
Yeah, Metro News is the publication of choi- choice for most government entities.
Yeah.
Shawnee County, Ms. Bulley.
But everyone will receive one of those letters. And, and that letter, just as a reminder, actually had a, a higher, higher mill rate published because we had to set that maximum, which is, it's unfortunate that that's the way it is, but, but that, that is the way that is. That's what the statute says. So we did come in under that. Um, but no, we're, we're not trying to conceal anything, we've, we've, um, abided by all the statutes that were supposed to.
And Ms. Bulley, we discussed this in Finance Canals still a little bit as well. And you would think that the Capital Journal would be the preferred place to publish it. But since the Capital Journal is not a locally owned newspaper, it makes it very difficult for organizations like ours to efficiently and quickly publish it. I, I would agree, the Metro Voice or Metro News is also probably not that widely read. But I, I think to Mr. Bucy's point, you know, all of us got it in the mail and, and it, and it gives hopefully enough notice. And hopefully our tens of viewers on YouTube now know too.
Yeah, I'll share it on TikTok.
Other, other questions for Mr. Bucy?
Yeah.
Bond and interest. And I, I think just one thing, Mr. Munoz, uh, in terms of example, let's just talk about one area, bond and interest. And, and, and right, we did the hundred and forty-three million dollar, uh, uh, bond, uh, project starting twenty fourteen. We sold those bonds, um, the estimated mill levy was about six point eight nine mils when we sold those bonds. Uh, we, we sold those bonds much more favorable at the time we sold them. We were also able to refinance ninety-eight percent of those bonds. Uh, many of you were around when we did that in twenty twenty. We also refinanced, um, in twenty seventeen as well, able to drive that mill levy down to four because we refinanced, saved taxpayers over the life of these bonds about twenty-seven. over the life of these bonds about twenty-seven million dollars plus five years. So we lowered those mill levies, right? A, a, and so this is, I, I think, one area, an example where we lowered that down. State aid in twenty-one, twenty-two was fifty-nine percent when we were at four mills. It went to sixty-one percent in twenty, uh, three, twenty-four and twenty-five, it went up to sixty-five percent state aid. Um, this year it's dropping to sixty-one percent. It dropped four points. Um, our, our bond and interest payments starting next year will go up about a million dollars. Uh, from this year it's nine point six. Next year it's ten point seven, and the runout's about ten point seven, ten point eight. So we're going to bring that mill levy back up a little bit to that four mark where we were four years ago, um, prior, you know, prior to when state aid went up to that sixty-five. If you look at our debt map, uh, original projections on the, the, the bond and interest capital, uh, state aid, pro- projections would have put us on a trajectory c- closing in on probably seventy percent state aid, um, by twenty-thirty. And, and things get tweaked every year when there's a group of folks that meet on, if you're in January, they start, you're familiar with that group, and they meet and they change things around a little bit. So, um, some changes to the state aid formula and capital outlay, uh, coupled with, uh, y- you know, some history of reduced enrollment has reduced our state aid, uh, n- number in that bond and interest. It's also impacted capital outlay and the LOB. Where, you, you know, for prior four in both of those funds, state aid was a little stronger than what we're looking at here this year, and, and I think probably the following two with the runout of the current finance formula.
Uh, thank you. I, I think it's really important for us to be well versed and understand all the factors that, that come into play for us having to raise it, and also for the taxpayer to understand, you know?
Yeah, and I think it goes back to what Matt's saying with this budget, and I love that scale as we're trying to be fair, and, and I think that's a great example, is if state aid went up, uh, to sixty-five percent, we didn't leave our mill levy at four because we, we didn't, we didn't need to collect it that year. I mean, we, we just need to collect what we need to make our bond and interest payments for. Uh, but that is the combination. I mean, we've got state aid and then what our local effort is. Um, so whatever state aid gets reduced, we're going to have to make up with that local effort, uh, on those bond payments. And, um, again, when we originally sold those bonds, that mill levy, I, I want to emphasize that was estimated at six point eight nine or six point nine mills. So, um, refinancing those, um, saved, uh, millions of dollars. That, that opportunity is no longer there currently with current interest rates, but if you've got money in the bank, you're, you're making a little money, so that's good.
Yes, Ms. Bulley?
Mr. Minky, if you could stay there, please?
Uh-oh.
So as, as a taxpayer that may not totally understand everything that's happened with the bond issue and the mill levy that's coming.
Right.
Why did we not, when we had the bond issue, not use that money to upgrade our buildings and repair all the air conditioning and redo classrooms? Why, why did that not happen when we had the, the bond?
Well, the seven of you at that time that were part of that bond issue determined what, what was important. One of the, it was a safety at that time was a big driver. Uh, all of the, one of the biggest safety issues was middle schools, uh, so, so, or, or not middle schools, but, um, the storm shelters in the elementary schools. So typically bond issues are for new classrooms, which there was some of that. We got rid of the annexes, right? We, 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 we did that at the, at the mix, and I think State Street might have had an annex that we did some brick and mortar, got rid of those. But big driver on that, uh, the hundred and forty-three, uh, was, was safety with the storm shelters. Um, we, 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 that's when we introduced cameras, uh, it, you, you know, extensively in our school buildings with that bond project, um, and upgraded our science classrooms. The, the, so there, there was, and I could share with you the, 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 I, I still have it, right? The, 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 the bond book, the big, you know, two-hundred-page bond book on, on all of the things that we did that we upgraded, but science classrooms were one of the things that did get upgraded. Um, and I don't know whether that's a great answer to your question, but, uh.
It is. I just think, you know, there will be people going, why didn't you, you know, upgrade all your buildings at the bond issue? And basically, it was very regulated, what the board said that needed to be spent on.
Not just the board, I mean.
Like the safety.
The community voted on it. I mean, we held an election, uh, and, and the community saw exactly what those bonds were for. Um, and, uh, so, yeah, I mean, there was, there was an election that, that, that said, this is what you're going to do with those bond dollars.
Great. Thanks for explaining that for people, or to people that might be tuning in.
Yeah.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, sure.
Anything else? Okay, we will move into superintendent's report, and then we'll come back and vote on that below.
At this time, as Dr. Mahia comes forward, Ms. Wallace and Dr. Mahia will share a little bit about the summer programming, uh, and we want to remind everyone as one of the announcements that the Family Fun Fitness Night, Family Fitness Fun Night, Ms. Wallace says fitness always comes before fun, uh, is, uh, September the seventeenth. People often say the word wrong, or the, the what, uh, the night the wrong way. Ms. Wallace, anything you want to mention about Fitness Night? And I know you're about to talk about summer programming along with Dr. Mahia, who did a phenomenal job running it.
Yep, we just want to highlight that the date did shift a little bit from the calendar. It is on September seventeenth, and that was due to a conflict with the county marching band festival.
All right.
Good evening, Dr. Anderson. Good evening, uh, members of the board. I'm really happy to be here today reporting on summer programs, and we'll just quickly walk you through what this summer, last summer was like. So all, we all know that ESER funding, uh, we didn't have any, any of those funds anymore. However, we were able to successfully complete year eight of these programs. Um, we hired a hundred fifty-plus certified staff and classified staff, so there was still a lot of interest, and even though there was a big change in the pay between when we had ESER and when we didn't, staff still wanted to be there for our scholars and support them and continue their education. Um, we offered transportation services to all the students attending E S Y. Um, we offered free breakfast and lunch in all facilities, and we were able to do some scholarships and offer free or reduced costs for, um, a lot of our families, um, to offset that change from having ESER and then not having ESER. Um, there are a lot of numbers here, but these are the sites that held programs, and you can see next to the initials of the schools what program they, uh, ran. And the overall message here is that we were still able to serve seven hundred eighty-eight scholars, um, you know, even with this huge change. So we are very, very proud of our community, of our teachers, of our principals who participate in the different modalities of services that we are still able to offer during the summer. Some of the examples of our programs, um, are on the list here. Um, I did not take out ACT prep, which we were not able to offer this year, but we will market it differently for next summer. Um, so I apologize for that, but other than that, you see the examples here, and they were focused. Um, you know, we split up the academic schools and, or programs and the enrichment. So Williams was, um, aside from the Twenty-First Century or, um, other grants that are available, SIG, uh, the School Improvement Grants that funded, um, the academic programs at Williams, and we had the enrichment programs at, um, Whitson. We still had Shaner for the little ones, all preschools, uh, preschoolers were invited to that. And, um, we had T-Calc, uh, of course, offering some, um, career pathways, and, uh, coding robotics was there. So we were spread, I mean, you saw the list of schools, but we departmentalized it a little more to have a clearer focus per site, um, so that families had that clearer choice of where they wanted to go and take their scholars. Uh, for high school, and we have some data here, they did a great job again of doing credit recovery and some did, uh, acquisition. So you have the data there by school, how many scholars participated, how many classes were completed, and how many credits were earned. And we want to celebrate that, um, I mean, you see the participation, five hundred eighty-four scholars. Um, and overall, the participation was thirteen hundred seventy-two students, which is great. And Topeka High, uh, was able to graduate six additional seniors through this program or method, and, um, or eight, seven, and Topeka Virtual, six additional scholars. So that was a very proud moment. I know Mr. Dick is here, and I'm sure very excited about that. And, um, everybody worked really hard to make sure that these scholars, uh, were able to make up whatever they needed, or those who are, you know, on certain tracks or, um, interested in, in moving quicker through the curriculum, uh, acquire some courses ahead of time.
Dr. Mahia?
Yes, sir.
If you completed class, that's only half credit. You don't get full credit for taking a class. It's a half credit.
There's semester-long courses, so it's a half a credit.
Oh, that was a half a semester.
It was a semester class.
Okay.
A, a full credit would be a year-long course.
And it depends on how it's offered in the schools. Um, so some key points that I wanted to bring forward, um, are that E S Y, uh, the way it is conceived is that the I E T, uh, team meets, and the data from those progress reports, uh, determine the eligibility and measures the student's pro- progress once the E S Y summer camp is completed. These records become permanent, uh, in the students' I E P. Um, so there's that, that tracking of progress, including the summer, and that's how it's determined. So it's the I E P that kind of guides what happens with them. Uh, for the Twenty-First Century Grants, the participated school, participating schools reported that they had increased participation where applicable. Uh, the SIG schools, the focus was on supporting students showing greater needs, so they received personalized invitations from their principals, um, where we took the data of the most, you know, needy or students who require some more support along the, the way. And, um, so those students were an, a focused group for inviting them to participate in those academic SIGs, uh, SIG programs. For, and so you might wonder, so what now? So this is what? So what? Uh, we are, because, you know, measuring, some, some programs are one week, some are two, some are three. We shortened by one week, um, because of funding, I guess, uh, well, not, I guess, I know that. In that time, it is really hard to measure growth. However, we do want to see how being in summer programs contributes to the scholars moving forward. And the way we're going to look at that is by using fall data for, um, for MAP and for Fastbridge, and, uh, we're going to find, we cannot determine with a hundred percent certainty if there is correlation, statistical correlation between being there and not being there, but it will inform, uh, us and allow us to make some solid conclusions about how scholars who participate in summer school are maintaining learning versus those who don't. So Dr. Kip here is going to help me with that, uh, statistical piece. Um, but we are looking forward to see what this yields and share with, um, of course, Dr. Anderson, Mrs. Wallace, and, and you all. That's what I have, and, um, I appreciate the opportunity to continue to, you know, lead in this capacity. I had fantastic, phenomenal, um, site coordinators once again, and we opened up opportunities for some of the, one person at least who is in the Leadership Academy to start getting that principalship training, um, you know, like dive deep and go for it. Uh, and, and she did a fantastic job. She's a teacher at Whitson. Um, and others were transitioning from like a coordinator to an assistant principal, for example, Ms. Cory Hare from, uh, Whitson. We had Carrie Kellum from, um, well, and then, you know, Mrs., um, Mrs. Shaner, she's not Mrs. Shaner, oh my gosh, Mrs. Baxter, and, um, Ms. Laura Nichols at T-Calc. So, um, they run very, very smoothly, and it was a great team to work with. I'll open it up for questions now.
Yeah, questions. Mr. Tatum?
Thank you, Dr. Schumacher. Okay, Dr. Mahia, good evening. I'm gonna start calling Mrs. Baxter, Baxter, Mrs. Shaner now. I love it.
Sorry, Mrs. Baxter.
So, um, regarding the Summer Enrichment Academy, um, we had seven hundred and eighty-eight students who participated in that, uh, which is, that, that, it, it is, feels like it's a, it's a pretty decent number of, of, uh, kids that, that were participating. But I'm, I'm curious as to how that number compares with the, the numbers of kids that we had over the preceding two years. Do you have, do you have a, a good sense of that?
I, I absolutely do, and, um, I would like to rectify that the seven hundred plus were in all of the programs. So, yes, it is a huge difference between last year and the previous year. The first year that I, in twenty twenty-two, uh, twenty twenty-three, summer of twenty-three, we had, um, slightly over a thousand students participating only in academic and in enrichment programs, plus the other grant programs. And last year, uh, twenty-four, summer of twenty-four, we had, um, right around nine hun- nine hundred, uh, in the same programs. This year it was much smaller.
And do you, thank you for that. Uh, I, my, my theory is that, um, because we weren't able to subsidize the, the summer enrichment programs, that had an impact on the number of kids that were able to participate. I think this is the first time we're having this, this discussion to figure out how accurate that is. So just, i- is that, is that your conclusion as well?
Ms. Wallace? This is pre-COVID status, uh, Mrs. Wallace.
Um, so, yes, I would say that that is definitely impacting numbers. Um, I do think, though, if we take into consideration that, um, we had School Improvement Grants this year, um, that we didn't necessarily have previously, that that, um, and those were all funded. So the program at, uh, Williams and Ross were all completely funded through the School Improvement Grants.
Okay.
We also had a tuition this year.
Right.
For any of the enrichment programs.
Right.
And that's, I, that significantly reduced it. We did scholarship any student who, um, enrolled in the academic program. So any students that went to the academic enrichment programs for reading and math were scholarships.
Okay, okay.
Through title.
Thank you both. That, that, un- unfortunately, I mean, I, I think, um, I probably guessed that this was a likely outcome, but I think we, we did the best we could, uh, which was very good with the resources that, that we had and, and the reach that we were able to accomplish. So thank you both.
Thank you.
Other questions? Ms. Bulley?
So I was looking at our preschool numbers at twenty-six, which seemed really low to me for preschoolers, and I was wondering if, just maybe thinking out loud, if you could, could be accurate, could not, who knows? Uh, is, do you believe that our preschool numbers are maybe low because they're in a separate building, or did those other programs have preschool in them as well?
Um, no, we didn't have preschool in the other buildings, and we just focused it on Shaner, but preschool is a tuition-based program in the summer. So that, I'm pretty sure had a big impact.
Okay. And then another thought I had was for the schools that sent out invitations, for the, the students that were maybe behind, behind in their grade level and his skill, would it be easy to look at those scores, the ones that came with, with the invitations and the ones that were invited and didn't show up? I was just thinking of, is that an easy way to capture data? And I'm sure Dr. Kip knows better than I do, but I know.
I don't know about easy, but possible, absolutely.
Yeah. So also, I just want, I know you probably have a big blast email of all this summer staff that you had. And I hope you will thank them from the board to step up to summer school. It was a big change from daily rate to an hourly wage. And so I thank them for doing that and allowing our summer school to still succeed this year.
I absolutely will. And I was very surprised, pleasantly surprised. I didn't think we were going to have the staff that we needed. And it was a very overwhelming interest. And so, absolutely.
It just shows that in Topeka 501, we have teachers with heart. They really care for their students.
Absolutely. Yes.
Mr. Manias?
You know, the summer went by so fast. My, my kids were in some of the programs at Chase. And it didn't occur to me till it was nearly over that, for me to stop by. And so you might think about next year, reminding us as board members to sort of, hey, if you want to stop by, let us know. That way we can go ahead and, and check in on what's happening in the schools. But also to Ms. Bulley's point, making sure we, we say thank you to those staff there.
Yes, sir. And I apologize for that oversight. That's big.
Dr. Beeson?
Just for my own clarification. So there's students in the extended school year that E S Y. And then there's academic enrichment. Is that right? The reading and math skills? The, Mrs. Bulley talked about an invitation based on maybe not being at grade level. Is that different from E S Y where it's coming from an I E P?
Correct. Yes.
What is that difference?
The difference is that in order to qualify for E S Y, the I E P team must determine, because the students are in a certain percentile lower than even other students who have I E Ps. So they need that continuous, and that's the longest program. They need that continuous, you know, routine and education. But they're working on life skills and things that are, yes, academically based, but mostly focused on life skills and independence, et cetera.
Okay. And then what are, what qualifies a student to get an invitation for the academic enrichment?
We, go ahead.
I would share that that, that is data-based around CAP scores. They also look at MAP scores, and they look at, they look at patterns. So students who may have been proficient and then fell below proficiency. So that we're also getting those kids who are right there on the cusp and helping them bump up.
Okay. Okay. Thank you both.
Other questions? I, for Ross, when we looked at the 2024 summer, Dr. Gardner was piloting kind of a specific program. Is that what the Bridge program was this summer? And are there kids that have participated in both summers? Just looking at like MAP scores, that kind of stuff, it'd be interesting for me at least to see like what growth of some of these students have been if we're able to maintain that contact. Not just one summer, but consecutive summers.
I, Dr. Gardner also invites his students based on data. And I cannot ascertain that they have, but I can imagine that they did. And Dr. Kip is taking notes over there to make sure we look at that.
And do we know when those scores, as far as like first FastBridge and MAP scores, when those start coming back?
We are testing FastBridge as of next week. If some schools started this week. So those should be coming back pretty fast. And then MAP window opens.
Next week.
Oh, next week as well.
Great. And then Dr. Kip will have all that information in like two days for the board. Thank you. Anything else? Okay. Thank you, Dr. Mahia.
Thank you.
As Dr. Mahia has concluded, thank you again so much for the excellent work that you've done. The only other update and announcements that you asked us about right before school started was to make sure we got information out to parents about the cell phone policy. Mr. Dick is here if you have any questions about how this school year started. But Dr. Gray did a fantastic job getting information to all of our families at the middle and high. So much so that I think one of the news stations, they were there interviewing freshmen about what they thought at Topeka High about the cell phone policy. So he's here for that reason, should you want any updates in that regard. And I'll turn it over to you.
Does, I think we would be interested in Dr. Dick's, or Dr. Dick, Mr. Dick's.
Mr. Dick?
Opinion on the first week of school.
First, first full week, which we have to thank as he's coming forward, our transportation staff and everybody that's made it so great. Mr. Dick?
Yeah, so I've visited both Highland Park and Topeka West as well here in the last few days, just to see how things are going. But across the board, everybody feels pretty good about the way things have been. Positive comments from administrators and teachers in regard to cell phone policies and issues. We've had, for the most part, pretty good support from parents when there have been issues. But I will say there have been relatively few. We all have taken phones from kids and had them in the office, and they've had to get them at the end of the day. But all in all, for the amount of phones and kids and everything that we see and the volume of that, it's relatively few. Not many calls a day to classrooms to deal with phones.
And what was that comment that the freshman made to the news?
Coming from, so the first day, W W W, I think, was there, they wanted to get some footage of a classroom. They asked, there's a couple of students that they wouldn't mind talking to. And the first question they asked this guy was, what do you, what do you think about the cell phone policy? He says, I don't really look at my phone during the school day. We didn't have it in middle school, so I don't know that it's any different. And I didn't think it was a big deal. So, and I would say the freshmen have been pretty easy for the most part, because it's kind of what they've been used to. So that hadn't been too bad. Hallways are pretty good. We see phones in the hall, reminding kids to put them away. But they've been pretty compliant, and we haven't had too many issues. So all in all, it's been, I would say, across the board, a very smooth start to the school year. Probably one of the smoother starts to a school year I've had.
Any, yeah, Ms. Schmidt?
I can't remember where we were at, but you made a comment about the first couple of days and lunch and how the students were interacting with each other. Can you share that with the board?
Yeah, so the first, and really, this has continued for the most part on into this week. But we noticed the first couple of days as we had lunch in the cafeteria, when you looked around, well, the first thing I noticed was it's a little more loud than usual. But when you looked around to see what was going on, it was really kids talking to each other. And we really didn't even notice a lot of cell phones at lunch. There certainly are some, but not to the extent that we have. Before, you'd see kids just kind of buried in their phone at the table, just staring at that, and not a lot of conversation. But it's been a bit more loud, which is fine. And lots of kids actually spending time having conversations with each other and not as much noticeable cell phone use. So that's been, I think, a positive thing.
Yeah, that's great. Other questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Dick. We appreciate it. Okay, so we will move to our action item, which I am looking for a motion. Maybe from Dr., yep, from Dr. Beeson.
Forgot my job for a second. I moved to approve publishing of the fiscal year 26 budget notice of hearing and exceeding revenue neutral rate certification forms as presented.
Second, second from Dr. Bonebrake. Any further discussion on the action item? Okay, we'll vote.
The vote is open. All votes are in, and the motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. So on to comments from board members, and I'll start down with Dr. Bonebrake as we do. And it'll turn on his microphone.
Just went through the Finance Council, so that's done. We'll see the local option budget, how much was obligated, but how much of that was actually allocated and not spent on the Menninger clock tower with your property taxes. The Health Committee and Wellness sort of met, but the benefits fair. They notified people of the health insurance. We, we basically paid, the district paid for the Blue Cross Blue Shield increase in rate. A lot of people still complain about the amount health insurance costs. But I think a lot of them are choosing the low deductible policies and not the higher deductible, which is a fourth as much as the most expensive one with the $1,000 deductible. But if you go to the $5,000 deductible, it costs you $12,000 less a year in premiums. Duh. Which one are you going to pick? And that was it for the committees. I, I did pass out an editorial from Matt Kleinman in the Kansas City paper about how Chris Kobach is trying to screw over the Kansas citizens and probably try to go for some national office. But, you know, he, he's fighting windmills here, but we don't have any option to put up with a years-long process. I'm sorry, that's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Bonebrake. Dr. Beeson?
I had to miss Health Insurance Committee to go to meet the teacher night last week, but I did catch up on the highlights. I think Dr. Bonebrake pretty much covered them. Obviously, no one will, you know, provide advice on which plans to go with. But there is, and there is a significant amount of money that people are spending on those premiums that maybe don't need to. And I know I've been guilty of that in the past. And we're going to be faced with continuing increases in health insurance as the years continue. So something to consider. The main thing in the past week has been back to school. I got to go to McClure Elementary to see all the kindergarteners for their first day of school, which is so lovely. And the first person I was greeted by was one of my very first students. I taught her as an eighth grader, and she is now a special education teacher at McClure Elementary. And then I was at Whitson on Wednesday and got my own kiddos started. All the buildings looked amazing. Transportation seems to have been very smooth. You know, I'm not in the buildings every day, but even as a parent, just dropping off and interacting with my kids, it seems like a really wonderful start of the school year. So thanks to all who have, have gotten that started. I think that's all I've got.
Thank you, Dr. Beeson. Ms. Bulley?
Mine are a little bit longer, and I apologize upfront. I know we want to go home, but sorry. We did have Personnel Committee today, and it's just full of pretty good news. Considering the last few years when hiring has been difficult and fighting with other districts to hire and keep. And we are down to only 38 vacancies, and they're all filled with long-term people. And many of those are going to be filled soon with our contract with overseas teachers that are coming in. So it's just been a really good situation to be able to have, you know, content people in their classrooms. And this is just very exciting. The same with our classified, our, it's our lowest pair of numbers, or pair two numbers in a very long time that we have openings for. And we were discussing that we've had job fairs in different areas. But we had very good luck, and this is something they're thinking about, with having job fairs within our school property. For instance, at Quinton Heights and at T-Calc, that we had so many applications filled out at those particular ones rather than off-site or out of state. So that's really exciting to know that our families are, are wanting to work with Topeka Public Schools. The next thing I wanted to talk about was K S B put out a call to a special, Special Education Task Force at the State Building that happened the last, last week for two days. And they're discussing, you know, how, how viable is it that special ed should be fully funded? And it's there. And this was very, this was very exciting to hear truth within the committee, talking about the actual numbers and how it's spent and budgets and how it's used in the budgets and how much effort it takes for our districts to cover our special education students. And it was just really nice to hear truth of numbers in any of this sped discussion, because I have not heard that in the last few years. There was, you know, a little bit of butting of heads between the State Board of Education rep and the chairperson, which was great to listen to, actually, to have them air that name-calling and all the things that they've been doing. And they actually kind of aired that. And there was support by other members on the committee for saying that the State Board of Education is stating the truth when, when they are meeting. Also, that there were new CAP, the state assessments that were put out this year. And we had 150 teachers in the state of Kansas come together to make those levels and cut scores. One of the things that they told us was that they were asked many times that they needed to make it shorter. So they have made it shorter. Sections have only 40 questions. And they did a much better job, or they feel like, K U feels like they did a much better job of leveling the reading levels correctly. They also changed the proficient, the levels and to make it more easily understood by parents and probably really the state house. So there's just four levels now instead of five levels. And so that's all exciting news. But the thing is, is it'll take us up to five years to understand what really is going to occur with our scores in the district. It takes like about five years for that data to really come in when you change assessments. So as we're listening to our assessment scores this year, we should keep that in mind, that this, this is a new test, and it's hard to compare to the, the ones that we had before. It was so fun being at the preschool open house last night, night before, seeing the parents come in with their little ones over a Sheldon. It was just a very exciting time seeing teachers join with their, their students. We were at T-Calc this week, and Dr. Watson came to speak with the students and also to our leadership team about being first in the nation of teachers signing for positions. And Dr. Anderson, would you fill in more in that area to the board of what happened that day?
Looking to see if Mr. Dick is here, since he's principal at T-Calc. And thank you for mentioning that about our teachers. 20 teachers signed their intents for the program. And Mr. Dick, if you want to add to this, that program is leading the way. It was acknowledged today at K-Bor. So it's funny that you mentioned that for career technical education, since we are the only program of its kind thanks to the Department of Commerce and T-Calc and K S D E and Washburn Tech. Do you want to remind our board members kind of what that program is? And those 20 teachers, of course, have their contracts. Four years from now, they will be, I'm sorry. they will be, I'm sorry, six years from now, they will be working in Topeka Public Schools. And actually, they'll finish in four years. So actually, four years from now.
Two years off.
Taking two years off their education. But we're excited. And they all know where they want to work at too. So we just have to make sure those opportunities exist.
Yeah. So Dr. Anderson did a great job of, all of the partners and everybody that came together to try to make that happen. Just to remember, so these students all earn a high school diploma. They'll earn an associate's degree of applied science from Washburn Tech. The partnership is really Washburn Tech and Washburn together. It's no cost to them. They have an apprenticeship in the school district. They'll get paid while they do that. They'll get all of their graduation requirements through Washburn, Washburn Tech, and T-Calc. At T-Calc, they really aren't students at their home high schools anymore, but that's where they'll earn their diploma from and can still participate in any activities and events at their home high school. But yeah, it was, it was a great day. 20, 21 students, 20 were there present that day to sign their letter of intent. And they all hopefully will be going to work for the Topeka Public Schools in four years.
And they all had a very good idea of what level they wanted to teach, what they want to get into. And also, there's a future superintendent there that a future board might look at to sign a contract with. Only two more things, and thank you for your patience. We also, with Dr. Anderson and the leadership team, we visited the juvenile detention center to look over their education department and what they have in place. And we were able to talk to students in the classroom. And all of the leadership team, people here in Burnett, wrote letters to these students to encourage them, to keep them motivated and keep going. And it was amazing to watch the students' faces when an envelope was handed to them. And all of them said, you know, I shouldn't say all of them, but a lot of them said, well, can we open these right now? And well, all together, I'm not sure how many students. I know.
It's approximately 21.
That's what I was thinking.
The highest number of girls, actually, nine. Young ladies, most of whom are not from Topeka Public Schools, Wichita, KCK, some Topeka Public Schools. But remember, because the facility is in our backyard, we oversee it. We provide teachers and materials and resources. 13 to 14 young men and nine young ladies.
Was very interesting talking to one of the educators there. She used to be an educator at Topeka High School. And Dr. Anderson asked her, why would you want to teach here if you had a teaching job at Topeka High School? And she said, because I really care about students not failing. She says, they're the ones that are getting to the edge of the cliff, and I like to put the basket there to catch them and pull them back and give them a future. And so that's the type of staff we have there, helping these students. And just so appreciative, you might remember her, her name. I don't remember it right off, but her explanation of why she was there just touched my heart. And lastly, this weekend, we're sequestered in a room. They give, they throw food at us with the legislative committee for KSB. I asked any of you if you had any ideas of what you wanted the lobbyists to work on. And I would, after the meeting, if you could give me any of those ideas that you might have, I would appreciate them so I can go into that room with at least some ideas. Of course, I already have some. You guys know me. But I would also like to carry yours in as well. So wish me luck and I hope they unlock the door when we're done. Thank you for your patience.
And Ms. Bowley, we trust. Mr. Tatum.
So I think I've probably had a pretty engaging past week or so. I think the only committee that I participated, or I was present for was finance. I think that was the only one, one that I was assigned to that took place over the course of the past couple of weeks. Finance committee and Dr. Bonebrake's already talked about that. Plus, we got to see Mr. Bucy's presentation in our meeting this evening. And he presented the same thing to us on the finance committee the other day. And a lot of the same questions, particularly the questions that Mr. Munoz has had, also came up in the, in the finance committee meeting. So you guys have seen the results of what we worked on in that committee meeting. And that's kind of led to the, to the R and R stuff that we've done in this meeting today. Last Tuesday and Wednesday, I had the wonderful privilege of being part of greeting the new kids as they show up to the schools. I know a lot of you guys on the board did as well. On Tuesday, I joined the teachers and the staff over at Landon Middle School. And Dr. Mahia was there and we had a great time talking to students. Most of the students at Landon were, you know, they were like kind of shy. They really wanted to kind of fly under the radar. But they were, they were really a good-natured bunch and the teachers were doing a great job of helping get people situated as soon as they came in the door and helping them kind of get acclimated to the environment. And those are just sixth graders on Tuesday. And then Wednesday, I went over to Topeka High. And that was for all the grades to be at Topeka High on last Wednesday. And Dr. Mahia was also there. And I asked her, did someone send you to chaperone me or something? You've been here at the two schools that I've been at for the past couple of days, but it was great. And Mr. Dick was great too. And just really talked to kids as they were walking the halls and helping them, you know, really get comfortable with the start of the school year. So that was last Tuesday, Wednesday. Mrs. Bowley has also, has already talked about the T-Calc promotion for the kids that are going into education. And Mrs. Bowley mentioned that there was a person, a young person who said that they wanted to be a future superintendent, but they also said they wanted to be a future board member also. So that's right. That's right. So that was, that was. That's right. Let her know what she's in for as a board member. And I think that kind of wraps up a full past couple of weeks for me. And I want to say thank you, Dr. Schumacher was that made sure I got a salad.
Only under duress from the other board members.
Oh, thank you.
Everybody else's idea.
You wanted it. I went from meeting to meeting this afternoon, so I'm looking forward to eating that salad as soon as we're all done here. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tatum. Mr. Munoz.
Let's see. So we were going to have policy committee next week on Monday, I believe, 1 o'clock. Is that right, Mr. White? Wait a minute. Okay. So we'll be there and that. And I'll, well, those of us on the policy committee will report out then. Equity committee, now that school is in session, I imagine will start up shortly. So I'll look forward to reporting out on that. For the first day of schools, I stopped at Eisenhower Middle School. And this was sixth graders, right? So we allow sixth graders to go one day early just because it is pretty tough in terms of transition, going from elementary to middle school. And so that was great to be able to stop and talk with students there. But you know, it's not just a difficult transition for students. There were parents with, you know, some teary eyes as well. So I, being a parent and those of us on the board, we know that it's hard to see our kids grow up and transition into young adults. And so I think it was a tough transition for, for a few individuals. And it's not just transitions for students and parents. We also have some transition going on at Ross and Eisenhower. And so communicating effectively and directly to parents about what we're doing there, how we think it's in the best interest of students to be successful, I think is important. And you know, I know I received some feedback and I think I know that our administration is continuing to make our argument for, for the changes there and how we think it's going to help students be successful and have a bright future. So look forward to seeing the results of some of those adjustments there. Meet the teacher. I, you know, went with all the kids and, you know, met individuals at high schools and middle schools and over at T-Calc. So that was interesting. The more years that you, you're on the board, you see familiar faces, but sometimes they're switching to different roles. And so sometimes I want everyone to be exactly where they're at for forever. But obviously, you also want staff to grow and to transition into what feels right for them. And so I've seen faces change positions and every one of them has felt like that was the time. And it's good to see us be able to support staff in that way. So, and that's it for me.
Thank you, Mr. Munoz. Ms. Schmidt.
Yeah, I just want to start by thanking staff for all the time and attention. Classrooms, getting ready to welcome students and families back to school. I got to spend time at Highland Park High School. I always love to find the kids that are sitting by themselves and plop down and embarrass them by asking them a bunch of questions and trying to get them connected with other people because it's intimidating. And when you're an introvert, you know, there's a lot of anxiety there. So I met Gunner this year. Gunner was the one that I was a pain in his side. And, you know, he asked questions about changing classes and who the principal was. So I got to call Julie Watson, Principal Watson over and introduce him to Julie so she, he could meet her and, and hook him up with a couple link people. So he had a few familiar faces. So that's always fun. And then I spent time with Ms. Abernathy at Highland Park Central. And there were some tears from some of the kindergartners, but most of all, there were a lot of excited kids to come back. I was happy it wasn't rainy this year. And so we got to give lots of high fives to students and parents as they were marching their kids off to school. I want to thank Ms. Stranethan and the facilities team for really taking some time to go around and look at our facilities and make sure that there is equity in how those facilities appear, whether they're on the east side, whether they're in central Topeka, whether they're on the west side. You know, I've said more than once that we are a neighbor in our neighborhoods. And it is very, and I'm often a squeaky wheel about this. I think it is very important that we have a lot of pride in our schools. I think the students and the families and the neighborhoods see and make determinations about the schools before they even walk in or talk to somebody. And so it is very important. And I really appreciate everything you've done so far, stepping into your role to take a look at that and working with our facilities team to make sure those, that when there's an issue, that we're getting that noted and we're working on getting those prioritized and addressed. Other than that, I am just excited. School is back. Dr. Bonebrake did speak about health insurance committee a little bit and not to beat a dead horse. I just don't know. I just want to call attention to the fact that the district, insurance rates have just gone up exponentially over the years. I remember at the state one year, our family policy went up like 30%. And that's a hit. And that takes money out of pockets for everything else. But I, I want to call out the fact that 501 has tried to absorb that cost year after year so that our teachers and our staff don't feel that hit. But I don't know in the state of the world, in the state of insurance, that we're going to be able to continue that. I also don't want programs like us encouraging people to visit their primary care. I don't want that to be seen as a punitive thing. We are doing that because when you go to your primary care and you build a relationship with that physician, things get diagnosed sooner. The sooner they get diagnosed, the better. The better for, for you, the better for, you know, medical costs. And so I just don't want that to be perceived as a negative thing. We care about our staff and their families. And we want you to be the healthiest that you can be. And we're just trying to be creative in some of the ways that we can help do our part to keep healthcare costs down. And so, you know, you'll probably hear more about that as, as time goes on, but I just want to add my two cents to that. Technology, you already spoke about, I think it's next week. Yeah. Okay. All the weeks are blending together and then policies on Monday. So.
Don't get too excited before it happens. I think what you said, Ms. Schmidt, about us being a neighbor. I just want to acknowledge Mrs. Burton and Mr. Benica Matt and Reed and Amelia, that, you know, I, I think us as a board, we acknowledge some of the struggles with Boswell Park and that we acknowledge that we want to continue to move forward. And maybe some things are a little more nuanced than we would like, but I do think we all believe that we are the neighbors, whether that be College Hill or Highland Park or wherever you live. I appreciate the staff and the movement on the cell phone policy. I know that for my kids at Jardine, because there's, for the middle schools, it was in the locker, but some schools had them out during lunchtime. And way, way back when, at Jardine Middle School, they had a games table where there were board games and card games and that kind of stuff. And that's gone away, but there's a push to maybe get that back out now that kids are interacting with each other again. And so that's very exciting. And so I appreciate the staff and I appreciate the grace and the patience from the parents because transitions aren't always easy. But it made me happy to hear that. I just wanted to remind, we will meet again before it, but we have the retreat coming up next month. If you didn't see, we decided on a date and a time to dive into the needs assessment more. And then finally, I just, and this might be hard for me, but I want to acknowledge somebody that's very important to me, that we celebrated the life of yesterday, Mr. Steve Hallman. I'm going to read a blurb from Facebook. I did not write it, but it might be apparent why I would read it tonight. So it says, "I wanted to play drums in elementary school band, but we were much too strapped to buy or even rent a single snare. I'm sure Mr. Hallman made sure many, many kids had free access to instruments, but it was how he presented it that stayed with me. I don't know if it was a conscious decision on his part, but I remember him showing up at our house one evening with a snare drum for me to use as long as I needed. You only have to get some drumsticks," is what he said. Instead of presenting, presenting it to me at school where I would have been embarrassed except a free instrument, he stopped by and delivered it himself. All in days' work to him, I'm sure, but very meaningful to a self-conscious fourth grader. I didn't stick with drums past elementary school, but that free snare started the percussion legacy of Dr. Randy Schumacher himself." That was written by my older sister. And that snare really did stay, I, I think I went to med school with that snare in my basement. And it might have been property of TPS and I don't, well, I don't know where it is now. So, so we did, if you'll notice in the consent agenda to offset that, we donated a trumpet that was in my basement to Jardine Middle School. But I've known the Hallman family from a very young age and went to his visitation on Tuesday night and the line out the door and down the block. It took us an hour and a half to talk to his family. The many lives and even people I haven't seen in 25 years. I saw, he was a year younger than me, Matt Crandall. I haven't talked to him since I graduated high school. And I asked what he's doing and he's a music teacher in Shawnee Mission School District at Horizons High, which is their alternative high school on Shawnee Mission. And so many people chose that life because of that man. And I just want to acknowledge him just because he is very important to a lot of us and, and very much appreciated. And the time that he took for us, I know, as the time that we take for this, takes away time from family. And I think all of us want to make that time important. And I know that his was. So with that, we'll move to adjournment. Need a motion for adjournment.
I was applauding your memoriam. I move the meeting adjourned.
And a second. And then we must raise our right hand and not our left if we're in favor. And it's unanimous. Thank you.